This screen is not on, by the way.
I'd like to call to order the Town of Frazier's regular board meeting on February first, twenty twenty-three at six P M. Can I please have a roll call?
Katie Fisher.
Louis Gregory.
Elaine Waldo.
Brian Circlamike.
Katie Souls.
Philip Vanderneil, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
And a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, which only has the minutes from January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three?
I so move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Okay, we are, I'd like to welcome everybody tonight. If you haven't signed in yet here in the building, there's a sign-in sheet over here. When we get to, well, we're headed out to open forum, so. On here in the, in the audience, you raise your hand, I'll call and you come up to the podium, state your name, and if you live in the town of Frazier or not, you don't have to give specific address of where you live. For sure, we're going to give you three minutes. And Michael or Internet or Rob will be timing that, and we will cut you off at three minutes, so not three oh one or three oh five, three minutes. We're open forum. So we're going to start that process now. So anybody here in the building that would like to address the board on items that are not on the agenda, now's your chance to address the board.
Hi, thank you. I'm Jody Docheff, Board Chair of Middle Park Health, based out of Kremlin, Colorado, in the Kremlin Hospital District.
Is this, this is on the agenda?
Oh, okay.
So we'll, we'll.
Wait for that.
Yeah, so this is open form is for items not.
On the agenda. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here in the audience? Hey, anybody online? You can raise your hand digitally, or you can. Do we have anybody online?
No, no one's online.
Okay, well, that, that ends that. Okay, we are now at discussion, possible action, and first up is Resolution twenty twenty-three zero two zero one, water system model update. And Lucas is going to be briefing the board on this.
Mayor Vanderneil and members of the board, I'm here to seek approval to use funds from our engineering fees. And to use.
I'm sorry, you're gonna have to move that mic closer to you or.
And make sure it's on.
So it's on. You hear me now? There we go.
Yeah.
All right, I'm here to ask for the use of funds from our engineering fees budget in order to update and calibrate and verify our water model for upcoming projects. The amount to not exceed thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight with available balance for twenty twenty-three is for seventy thousand for engineering fees. A working town water model is necessary to analyze and approve changes to the town's water system for future development projects. The existing town water model was created by Brown and Codwell for the two thousand eight Water Master Supply Study. There were updates over the years, last, most recent one being in twenty seventeen. It is the belief of Merrick that in order to approve or vet some of our future development projects and its effects on our water system model, that we need to have that calibrated and adjusted and working up to its optimum standards. Otherwise, as the water superintendent, I'm unable to, I'm not an engineer, I don't have a water model, I'm unable to vet a lot of these projects thoroughly, and we need our town engineer to essentially give the go-ahead and recommendations for much of our future development. Any questions?
I have a question. Um, so why was, um, the, well, it was optional, but the development design review and modeling of specific infrastructure questions deleted, and there was also the one about the connection with Winter Park Ranch and Grand County One was deleted. So I don't know if that question is for you or if it's for F.
Yes, essentially, the original budget, I decided to negotiate more with Merrick and try to get a better scope of what we need at this point, and currently, the, the interconnect was not, is not being pursued by the town at this point.
Yeah, it's not imminent.
Yeah, so I was trying to bring the, the costs down in order to allow, you know, I don't want to spend our entire engineering budget just on the water model. And a lot of these objects, I believe, can be tied into the costs of the future projects. So we use a water model, then as the project comes, then we can use funds associated with that project in order to vet the project.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, just, just to clarify, this is just to do a, a study or assessment of the water system?
Uh, yes, pretty much what it does is, as we make changes to the water system, most of it involves fire flow to make sure we have enough capacity in case of fire. Because as you pull water from some parts of the system, as you change things, it can cause low pressure events. And if we fall below a certain pressure threshold, that can cause inflow into the water system. So essentially, what this does is allows us to project what would happen in certain events to make sure we have sufficient water pressure throughout the rest of the system as we make changes.
Okay, it, it says under subject that add additional infrastructure, are you actually going to be upgrading the system or just, is it just to study the system?
Um, it's essentially so we can tell, one thing, we do have existing deficiencies, and technology hasn't, you know, come a long way since two thousand eight. And at the same time, it's for, you know, future projects, I mean, there's a West Mountain project, and we want to be able to use our calibrated model to, you know, confirm that everything is going to work as we hope, and the same thing with Victoria Village. I know there's a lot of other projects, the pool yard possibly happening and possible additions to our water treatment. Okay, thanks.
Any other comments from the board? We did trustee Quinn send in an email, and I'm going to read what he's got to say here. As far as the study for the water plant proposed by a company we use for referrals, I say we hold off on this decision until a new town manager is hired. Any other comments from the board?
What is, what does he mean now?
It's not, it's not mine. I've just reading for word, as, as far as the study for the water plant proposed by a company we use for referrals, I say we hold off on a decision until a new town manager is hired.
One thing I will, I'll, I'll address is we are looking at adding additional PRVs. We have a few parts in my system that have pressures that, you know, aren't exactly optimal for reducing flows or in reducing leakage, because as pressures go up, more leakage happens in the system. And additionally, there's parts of town that are using waters, sources that were not originally for the use of those subdivisions, and it is approved in the current town budget for the additional PRVs to be built. My discussions with Merrick, they have concerns about the settings of these PRVs and what effects it might have on the system. So this project is essentially on hold until I can get an engineer to sign off and say that these, this project is good to go. And that's part of the reason why I'm pushing for this at the beginning of the year, because these concerns have been raised. And unless we can get the PRVs, you know, approved in the next few months, that it'll probably be pushed off to the next year budget.
Are you comfortable working with Merrick?
Yes, I actually, they seem very knowledgeable and very open to my concerns.
Hey, any further discussion or most?
Well, yeah, I don't see reason to wait. This is budgeted money already, right? You budgeted the money for this year. I would make a motion to approve the resolution. What is it, twenty twenty-three dash zero two dash zero one?
Yes.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Okay, great. Thank you, Lucas.
Thank you.
Next is construction guarantee agreement, Frazier Middle Park Health Center, and Ed will be leaving this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Vanderneil and board. This is a continuation of the presentation I made in January the fourth. We had had communications with Middle Park Health to cover the construction guarantee, and they made a request to me to waive the surety requirement since I viewed them as a governmental entity. I was open to that idea, and I presented that to the Board of Trustees on January the, the fourth. The board did not act on that. The board wanted additional information. So in your packet, I included the original construction guarantee that was presented January the fourth. Immediately following that is a, as an engineer's cost estimate for the actual cost of those public improvements. The surety amount is approximately two, two point four million dollars. And so the question is, that was brought to me was, the board wanted to know more about what those actual construction cost estimates were. So I wanted to provide that. Now, we also have representatives from Middle Park Health here in the audience. This is Jody Docheff. It works with Middle Park Health, and she'd like to speak, and maybe you can introduce your, your other team members here as well.
Sure. Thank you. My second appearance. I'm Jody Docheff, Board Chair for Middle Park Health of the Kremlin Memorial Hospital District. I bring with me today, I have Ray Kendrick. He is our Director of Operations, and so he will help oversee the construction projects that we have. He was also primary on our previous construction projects that we just completed with the build of the brand-new hospital in Kremlin, and then the expansion that we did in our Granby facility. And then I have Becca. She is the Director in our Finance Department and Analyst, and so she's been integral with helping us with getting all the numbers and the analytics together to work with the financing and the logistics of cost, trying to work through the COVID era where all of our supplies, you know, that it was ever-changing target. So I brought them with me in case you had any extra questions that I might not be able to answer, but they should be able to support whatever I have to say for the questions. And so our, our ask was if we could waive the fees for our project here in Frazier. We're very excited. We, we are in the financing process right now. We're hoping to have it completed by next week. We'll see. You know, it, it comes and it goes. We will have altogether as an all-in on this project, it'll be right around thirty-one million dollars that we'll have invested in this. You know, two million dollars are going to be the items that you guys were concerned about, which would be the, the earthwork, the paving, the utilities, you know, those kinds of things that you want to make sure that are completed. We won't be addressing any of those until once the finance has been completed and we're ready to move. But our goal is to start breaking ground this spring. We are very excited to keep moving forward. We'd like to feel that, you know, our presence and the work that we've done in the past with our other construction projects will kind of give you some comfort that, you know, we plan a project, it's our strategic plan, we stick with the plan, we stick with the budget and our timeframe. And then we want to, because we want to be good neighbors with the community. We feel that this is going to be a huge, huge asset to the community on this side of the county. When you don't have to drive Fraser flats in the winter, you know, during the windy times and everything like that, that would be really, really helpful for those where transportation might be a problem for them. And are there any questions I can try to answer for you? I can say that we've already invested almost eight million dollars at this point. You know, we have four million, and then we'll have another sum in bonds and things through the financing. So we have made significant investment in this already, which might give you, you know, more reassurance as well that we will be completing the project on time and with the intentions, good intentions.
So both other projects, the Kremlin and Granby, were both on time and in budget?
Yeah, we are a little bit over budget, but not much, but they were on time.
And what's the cost to the facility for the surety?
It'd be about two point four million dollars.
But that, but you're not paying that.
Oh.
That's what the question is now. Right away, that, right?
Well, no.
Right, but.
Well, the surety's for two point four. But it's a portion of.
It's a percentage of what the two, you know, so, so the items you guys are concerned about are going to be about two million dollars. And so if, say we do a hundred, hundred and twenty-five percent, you know, the surety about, I believe you have like right around two point three or so. Right.
What's your cost for that?
We just have to get a letter of credit, right?
Well, we would have to hold that, you know, that'd be part of, it'd be restricted within our construction budget. To do that, we'd have to hold that to the side for us.
And so you don't even have a premium for that?
I don't know that number, and I apologize. I don't have the number of that off the top of my head, but I can probably have that for you, but before I leave today.
Because I think that's what we were asking last time. Okay, I can get that number for you, and I'll have that for you before we leave.
Are there any other comments or concerns I can address for you?
So it doesn't quite work. Like, once we leave item on the agenda, we're not going to go back to that item. If that makes sense, like you can get that number. That would be great. Otherwise, we could.
You could table it to the end.
We could table it if you guys want to stick around for the next three or four, three hours.
Yeah, I don't mind. I don't mind hanging around so you have that specific information, because I do believe it's hard to make a decision unless you know what's going to cost, you know, those kinds of things. So I totally appreciate that, and I apologize for not having that number. And what I'll do, I'll work on that immediately for you.
Okay. And then, that, so we can have a motion to table until the end. Able it to after.
I think the motion, Mayor, would be to continue this item and move it to the end of the agenda.
Well, I don't want to do that, because I don't want it to sit here for exactly a session.
Oh, no, 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 they could, they.
Let's move it to after support for US forty. If I can have that motion, please.
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'd, I'd like to know what it would be without the contingency for the contractors also. So based on two different numbers, the number you gave us, and then if we took the contingency off, what it would be.
Okay, I'll find those out, and thank you for your consideration and letting us get this information back for you.
Any further discussion?
You're welcome.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Opposed? Okay, we are now at Resolution twenty twenty-three zero two zero two, Victoria Village Agreement, and Michael will be leading this discussion.
Yeah, so, good evening, Town Board Trustees. What we have for you tonight is a contract for services to include the master planning process and the pre-construction work that's been done. We've had, we did hire our attorney, Kendra Carberry, to represent the town and to look at the contract, and we were able to negotiate a good contract. She was able to vet a few things, make sure the liability was there to protect the town's interests, and and we provided a not-to-exceed number in there for seven hundred sixty-two thousand dollars, seven hundred fifteen cents, I'm sorry, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred fifteen dollars for this work, includes, you know, engineering, design, architectural, get us to the point where we're ready to break ground, basically. We, we're, you know, there's, there's good liability, there's a general liability insurance written in for one million dollars. Professional liability insurance, two million, plus three million dollars, that's not umbrella policy for this. And that's mainly regarding the construction plans that are going to be created for Victoria Village based on the master plan. Essentially, you want that coverage in the event that any of the construction plans are faulty, you want to be able to have the insurance there to protect the town and protect the development. So that's what that's there for. And yeah, this agreement's right here before you. Kendra did a fantastic job. She, she regretted not being able to be available, and she is available at seven. If there are any questions that the board has, she can be available tonight, starting at seven o'clock. And otherwise, I'll hand off Todd.
Who, who is that? I'm sorry, Kendra?
Kendra Carberry. So we reached out to about four law firms that specialize in land use and affordable housing contracts, subdivision improvement agreements, programming and development. She's very well, Kendra is very well kind of renowned in this, in this sector. She developed a lot of the programs for bail, their affordable housing projects and programs, contract services. We even mirrored a lot of the language from the deed restriction that they're on, Frager's deed restriction that she wrote, she's a part of. And she knows exactly what to look for, and she did a good job with it, and we were able to reach an agreement on a Monday and have this contract for you tonight for reconsideration.
Okay, that was my question, and whether or not our attorney has reviewed this in depth.
Yes.
Because this is a lot of legalese that I'm not familiar with, but.
So the main things that I just kind of covered were the things that she kind of altered in the contract, really just a not-to-exceed number, protect the town from, you know, the liability for the potential of any kind of faulty construction. I'm not saying that they're going to be, but you want to be, be careful in these types of situations. And she knew what to look for, she provided some feedback to me, and we were able to negotiate a good contract with Todd and his team, and happy to answer any questions that you may have about it.
Was there any back and forth, or did you guys just like the contract?
No, there was back and forth. I think at the end of the day, we may have been less comfortable with it than, than Kendra and staff, but there was back and forth with it, and I think we were able to iron it out. You know, mutually satisfactory to both the town and to Mountain Affordable.
And again, this is just for the, the master, to cover the master planning process, everything up to the pre-construction point, re-subdividing, design work for utilities, horizontal infrastructure, and then I kind of, and if Todd, if you want to kind of cover the rest, I hope you guys will be included in that work.
Sure. So I'm Todd Moore with Mountain Affordable Housing Development, and this is my partner, Matt Ginsberg. So, you know, as we see it, the, the contract does cover the scope of services through the point we're ready to break ground. This first component does provide for master planning and conceptual design that goes along with master planning. So that way, when we have the master plan complete and ready for approval, hopefully, the first Board of Trustees meeting in May, that we will then commence with design development for the first phase. We will also be preparing a phasing plan that shows, based on the master plan, what buildings that we have for design based on site yield. And we will have those elevated as we go through the master planning process, so that we have, you know, floor plan renderings, elevations, color drawings that we will be presenting to the, the town and the community as we go through the process, and we'll be soliciting feedback from them. But, you know, the, the detailed design work starts after that. And so we've, we've prepared a schedule to kind of walk through the sequence of activities that we envisioned between now and groundbreaking, including financing applications to get light tech financing and, and working with the town on grants. So we have sketched that out in a bar chart that we're happy to talk to you about and show you what some of the, the sequences of the work and the key dates that we're targeting on. If that would be of interest, we're happy to do that. We have, we, we hope to have Vogel and Associates on the line to kind of walk through and be able to answer questions about master planning and community engagement, and how we will be soliciting input and factoring that into the master plan, but he thinks that he's online, but apparently he's not in the same waiting room that, that the meeting is in, so I don't know if he's been able to.
No wonder nobody's joining us tonight.
So I don't know if there's others as well, but if you want to just pause for a minute, then we can see if that works. There's something wrong with this zoom?
I can stop it. Are you on that? I mean, I'm online, but I'll just.
Miss the old days.
So the ID, the meeting ID does not match what's on our, it's not matching. We have two five nine zero four zero eight zero one three on the agenda.
Probably why no one jumped in for public comment.
We know there was someone that was going to.
Well, Jody's relieved.
Yeah, I think she gets her extra time.
So what we'll do is we'll, we'll stop this, and we'll be able to tie, tie these together with the recording. We're not sure what happened there, but we'll go in, end this meeting, or we'll start it. Yes, are you? So I just want to make the board aware that we're going to have to go back to open forum because of the technical difficulties. We just happened to.
We do that after this presentation.
I think we'll cut.
But that's laid plans for changing.
So we'd just like to apologize to everybody who just joined the meeting online. We had a faulty number with the previous Zoom link and started the meeting already. That, that recording will be available on our YouTube channel. That'll be posted after this meeting. We apologize for the confusion, and as the mayor said, we will be providing the opportunity for open forum for anyone who wanted to provide some input to the board for items not on the agenda. Apologize for that. So, yeah, we've already started the meeting, obviously, and we're, we're, right now, we're at Resolution twenty twenty-three zero two zero two, Victoria Village Agreement. We're going to, going to be having some input from, from Mountain Affordable Housing, and, and then I'm going to suggest that we put the open forum. I'm going to suggest that we put the open forum right after this, the topic that we're discussing right now. Um, I don't know if we need a motion for that, but that's what's going to happen. So, um, we do apologize to those online, but we will get you back in here for the open forum here in a second, well, minutes here.
That's it. We're being hacked. I can tell. Somebody's messing with the other. Okay.
Okay, Todd, do you want to, um, go ahead and continue?
Yes, thank you. Uh, Michael, if we could please have you pull up the, the schedule for us. Well, we'd like to walk you through that just so you can see what we have planned and, and what the sequence is. But most importantly, you know, we have a lot of near-term activities that, um, start off with, with master planning, because obviously we need to know what the overall planning program is. So, um, this may not be the first time that you've seen this, but we've revised it a little bit based on where we are today. And, um, so we've, we've, um, planned and, and scheduled, uh, with your concurrence, four different workshops for the, um, for the master plan. The first three are more, um, open houses and, and interactive. Uh, we've planned those on February twenty-second, March fifteenth, April thirteenth, and then finally on May seventeenth. With the goal of the, the May seventeenth, um, being conducted concurrently with the Board of Trustees meeting, so that at the end of that, we will be seeking approval of the master plan. And so, um, so that really gives us four options, four opportunities for that interaction. Um, we anticipate that the open houses and workshops would run from about, uh, four o'clock to five thirty on the days that we've indicated. Uh, we plan to advertise those, um, widely. We'd like to put them in the Sky High News. We'd like to post them on the town's website and, uh, also create other, um, notifications so that we can garner input there and we really want to be able to maximize participation. That'll be important for us. And when I get through, kind of walking through the schedule, you know, Jeff will share what that, what that looks like in terms of, um, initial project initiation all the way through final visioning and, and the established master plan. So in parallel with that, we've already started during the month of January, um, working with, with, uh, the town management staff and town finance to assist with grant strategies and grant amounts to maximize our opportunities there. Those are currently in the works. Matt will be able to provide us an update if there's any questions on that, but that has already been underway. I think the other thing is that we intend to wrap that up roughly in May, um, as you can see here, and then, um, we'll follow that in August by, um, pulling together an application package for nine percent federal light tech financing. So that is our goal. That's what we're going to be targeting. Uh, we originally thought we might, um, go for the August application for four percent. But, um, you know, looking at everything that we had to do, that was probably more ambitious than it was realistic, uh, based on where we are today. And so, uh, we will start with the nine percent and, uh, and move forward from there. Um, we will proceed, proceed with a subsequent round of public financing in August of next year. Also, what we have currently coming up is, um, in February through May, we will start to do, uh, site assessment, including, uh, wetland delineations. There's already been one, I believe it's been done, but we need to validate what the limits are so that we know what the boundaries are for disturbance and non-disturbance. But we will be kicking that off roughly May, excuse me, February sixteenth. And, uh, I think the town is planning to engage an environmental consultant to do, um, some well monitoring. Not as in well water, but just checking the, uh, groundwater levels. We also will be looking to update the needs assessment. As you know, for affordable housing, the county has put together a needs assessment. We want to make sure that the assumptions that are in there are still valid. So we'll be updating that in support of our February application for light tech financing. We will also be doing a parking study during that to make sure that, um, one of the things that we want to talk to the town about is, is, um, parking regulations and what we're required for in our, uh, preliminary, preliminary conceptual plan that was presented to the town in December, maybe, oh, maybe November. We, you know, we had assumed that the parking requirements would be as currently stated, um, in town code. But, um, we know there's been some requests to evaluate, well, what if we, um, add a fourth story and, and get additional units that we can, uh, put in, in Victoria Village? Obviously that comes with the demand for more parking. So, um, we want to do that and, uh, and assess what those needs are based on additional units. May through June, we'll also be doing, um, geotechnical investigation, looking what the soil's composition is and what they can support in terms of, loading and, and foundation recommendations. And then we will look to start surveying after that and, um, and civil engineering as well, which would be roughly May through July. Um, and right now we're looking to do site preparation starting in August and, uh, begin relocating utilities based on the, the final master plan and move forward from there. Jeff, if you're online and can hear me, if you wouldn't mind taking a few minutes and talking about the, the master planning process and approach for community engagement.
Yes, um, good evening, um, Jeff Vogel. Um, just, uh, as, as Todd indicated, you know, our next steps is really to initiate the master planning process and, um, the process would coincide with the, um, the four workshops, um, that we have, um, outlined on the schedule and the first being really the project initiation orientation. So that, that workshop would involve, um, really discussing the physical attributes of the site. Um, kind of going through, um, you know, the opportunities and constraints associated with the property and then also talking about really what are the bigger ideas, um, for the property in terms of housing and recreation and some of those other uses and, and, um, you know, we'll have a series of exhibits and outlines to, to facilitate discussion with, um, folks that attend the open house to get that insights in the, and, um, input. And then from that, um, that information will be synthesized and evaluated and we'll have a second, um, workshop that really kind of refines a little bit more of the vision and the program based on what we heard in the first community outreach meeting, um, workshop. So, um, on the vision and programming, again, it's start to talk about maybe in more detail, the type of uses, the type of recreation components, um, kind of, um, narrowing down that, uh, just a little bit more, but also again, with that, allowing for additional input and, and insights. And then from that, we would begin to create master plan alternatives. So the alternatives would test and, um, illustrate some of the items in terms of programming and vision elements um, with the alternatives. Um, those alternatives would be presented at the third workshop. Um, and again, we may have one, two or three alternatives in which we would, um, solicit input um, from, from the stakeholders and, and members. Um, with that, um, workshop, again, we would summarize and synthesize that information. And, and with each one of these, by the way, as we, as we prepare these, these, these workshops and, and summaries, we would obviously be meeting with the town of Fraser and staff, um, at each level of these, just to share the information, discuss it and, and, and evaluate next steps. And then out of the alternatives, or maybe a hybrid of the alternatives, um, or even a fourth alternative in which that would, um, inform what would become a final master plan and visioning document. That would get a, be, uh, presented, um, at a workshop just to kind of illustrate, you know, what, where did we end up? Programming wise and character and all those other considerations. And then that would, um, that final master plan would serve as a basis for beginning to prepare entitlement and plat documents, um, as required to, to move this forward. So that's kind of the, um, that's kind of the, an overall of, of, of the master planning process. And I can't, you know, stress enough, it's really going to be an iterative process with staff and also with, you know, community residents and stakeholders.
Thank you, Jeff. So just kind of to, to wrap up, you know, in terms of sequence and iteration of activities, um, I didn't touch on the entitlements, but if you, if you were to look at the bar chart that we have up on the screen, you can see that we have about five months in there for plating and entitlements. It, we think it's a reasonable duration for that and, uh, uh, with that going as planned, we should have our final plans and everything approved by, um, the end of September. And so, you know, that's really what we need ultimately to, to start with building permits and, and start moving dirt on the site. So, um, that's, that's really part of the critical path that's, that's driving all of this. So, um, we'll stay focused on that and make sure things stay on track. But happy to answer any other questions.
Seems like a good plan.
Yeah, it's good progress. So obviously we, we are happy to work with, um, the town and staff accordingly as we go through this. You know, there's been some discussion whether the town might want to set up a subcommittee to work with us through master planning and, and conceptual design. We're certainly open to that. If you want to tell us who we'd like to meet with, that would be great.
Isn't that the planning commission that would be doing that? No?
They shouldn't be involved.
So it'll be community meetings. Those first firm meetings are community meetings and they're not scheduled at the same time as our board meeting as a workshop. There are separate workshops.
Yes, the first three are.
Okay.
Um, and then the last one would be, um, on the record.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Great.
Cause I think that's a requirement that, um, at least one of the, the open houses and workshops needs to be in a formal setting.
Or we'll have a public hearing, that last one, just to make sure, um, and provide some opportunities for the community to provide input on the final design or the final two designs, or hopefully it's just one final design that we're looking at.
Yeah.
So, uh, that'll meet our grant requirements for Victoria Village for that acquisition. And I'm not sure if it was said before, but, uh, we do have the church available for these open houses. Just having the extra space, there's the presentation involved, go over like, uh, Todd was talking about the characteristics of the site limitations. Um, you know, you have additional seating there. And, uh, and it doesn't conflict with any of our, our public meetings or planning commission meetings. If there is an advantage to bring to using our AV system for one of those workshops, we have the flexibility to do that. Otherwise we're, we're looking at using the church for these open houses.
Great.
And we can go old school as well, you know, with, with bulletin boards and posters and stuff like that. So most of us are old school anyways.
Pre- pre-sym time, it's a much better time.
Okay. Well, that's awesome.
Okay. Anybody else have a comment?
Hey, I'm going to open this up to the public. See if we have any public comment. I'll start here in, um, the building. So if any, any of the public would like to. No, we're still taking comments and discussion. So, um, anybody here in the building? And it's going to be the same rules, three minutes. Not seeing any hands here, anybody? Yep, go ahead and come up, state your name and if you live in the town, I'm.
Hi, Megan Luther, resident of Fraser. I just wondered with that agreement, Todd, you had mentioned there was some stuff that you think you can work with, like that's maybe not necessarily what you guys wanted. And I was wondering what those things might have been that the lawyers pushed through and how they would affect the town itself and the project. Like is it, was it detrimental? Did you have to give up more than you wanted to or was it a good, like, is it okay? Like, can we work with it? So that would be my question.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, we can work with it. Um, but I think the primary changes were, one, as it relates to, um, moving forward and having the right to, um, suspend or terminate the project. Which is, you know, obviously the town's going to have that right. So, um, council wanted to make sure that it was explicit in the agreement. Uh, we did modify the limits of our, uh, various insurance policies to, um, accommodate the request of the town. So those increased generally by one to two million, um, for the different policies. Um, and I think that the last one was a, was a modification to the limitation of liability that tied that into the extent of the, um, prevailing insurance policies. But those are probably the big three.
Great. Nice. Good question. Okay, it looks like we have one hand up and this is specific to, um, the item that we're talking about, um, which is, um, Victoria Village Agreement. So Deborah Schulman, you have three minutes.
Ashley, my comment wasn't specific to the Victoria Village. Are we going to have public comment on general topics?
Yeah, so we, um, yeah, so we had a technical difficulty and we will be having, uh, open forum after this. So hang on.
Okay, so this isn't part of that. So I'm, I'm going to wait till the open forum because my, what my comment is not related to the Victoria Village. Thank you.
And I didn't see any other hands up. Any further board discussion?
No, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution.
Getting so fast. Good.
To prove resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh two dash oh two for the Victoria Village master plan agreement.
Hey, is there a?
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Great. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Todd.
Okay, so, um, we did have technical difficulties at the beginning of this and we did already have open forum, but, um, the, the Zoom link was incorrect. So we're going to open this back up to, uh, open comment and, uh, open forum. And to, to be clear, you have three minutes only. Um, we will cut, um, cut it off at three minutes. You need to state your name and if you live in the town of Fraser or not. So if you can digitally raise your hand, we, we know Deborah is up, so.
Yeah, so if I could go, I, I, I've lost the raising hand thing. Um, so am I, uh, good to go in my comment?
Yep, you are ready to go. Thank you.
Okay, good. I'm going to go ahead and read it. In twenty sixteen, when we put down the deposit in our dream home located on Cozens Meadow Conservation Eastman Open Space, we had no idea that the developer was planning to develop the meadow or that we were buying into a metropolitan district. Up until summer of twenty twenty-two, the developer endeavored to keep the metropolitan district secret. There was no disclosure of the district in our contract nor about the taxes. For over a decade, he and his wife were the only directors on the five director resident board. So there was lack of accountability and debt and spending. There were no elections. Elections are important, is how we keep these districts accountable to the taxpayer. But there were no email notifications of residents and property owners of meetings and elections as mandated for the metropolitan districts formed after January first two thousand. Yet again, Spencer Fane, the law firm that is the administrator of the three districts, has failed to meet the hundred and fifty day deadline for email notification regarding procedures for, for the election that occur in May. This is the same law firm that wrote to the county and objected to the unsolicited applicants for the board. It is a clear conflict of interest if the law firm administering a metropolitan district is also representing the developer. Metropolitan districts are meant to keep home prices down. Instead, due to rampant abuse of metropolitan districts statewide, home prices and taxes are dramatically increased. In Castle Rock, the magic of compound interest has ballooned debt to over a billion dollars. We are only supposed to pay for the public improvements within our district, but the way our districts are structured, all debt and revenue goes to the posters stamp district with no residence. The developer has proposed amendments to the two thousand and five service plan that would create numerous districts. Then he can play a show game with debt and revenue, increasing our debt, our interest rates, and ultimately our taxes and force us to be responsible for bonds to fund future developments. I ask that no amendments to the two thousand and five service plan are considered until there is a full accounting of the debt, interest and taxes for the West Meadow Metropolitan District. We are not rich. We bought when prices were considerably lower. We're saving for retirement that will come sooner than expected for health reasons. We cannot afford excessive taxation. I am here because the town of. I am here because the town of Frazier approved our metro districts along with the two thousand and five service plan. So there is some responsibility to us, the property owners by the town of Frazier, to make sure that the rules and regulations of the Special District Act are adhered to. Thank you very much for listening.
Great, thank you, Deborah. Okay, are there any other public comments from online? Okay, gone once. Going twice. Okay, let's move on. Does the hospital have our answer? You guys wanna go ahead and come up and?
Thank you, Jody Dochev, Middle Park Health. Thank you for allowing us the additional time so we can get some information for you. So what we have found is that the Assured bond, the premium will be one to two percent of the amount of the bond. So being two point three is gonna be twenty-six, or excuse me, twenty-three to forty-six thousand dollars. I don't have the firm whether it'll be one or two percent at this time, but the minimum amount would be the twenty-three thousand dollars that we would be asking to waive up to the forty-six thousand dollars. As far as how the bond works for us, it's not just a letter of credit. What happens is that two point three million dollars is reserved out of our financing in our construction account, and that's held to the side. So we cannot use that until the project is completely finished, and then it's released. So we would not be able to use those funds to apply it to the items that you guys are asking us to complete at that time. And so that's where that concern comes in. So the way, the only way we can mitigate that would be, you know, asking for additional financing from our lenders or seeing if there's a way to come up with some additional cash. So it's not your traditional letter of credit. It does affect the cash that we can use in our construction account.
Okay, thank you. Wouldn't wouldn't it just be released when those components of the construction are completed?
Right, but we would need to use that money in order to initiate, you know, because we have, we have to put funds down, you know, for people to start the project. And so it just wouldn't be available. And so, you know, the workaround would be to just ask for additional funding, you know, which is an option, you know, we can ask for that as well. But we were just kind of hoping, you know, for cooperation with the town. And as far as contingency, you're asking about the contingencies that we have. So our contractor is has a contingency of one and a quarter million, and Middle Park Health has a contingency of one and a quarter million. So if something were to happen, there would still be the funds in the contingency account to cover the cost of the infrastructure and the items that you guys are concerned.
So I feel like the with the C G A is that contingency agreement, the short form covers us in case the there is a default, requires the reimbursement from the developer. So in the spirit of getting this ball rolling and helping them out, because it's gonna be a huge amenity, I would like to make a motion to approve resolution two oh two two oh six oh two. Is that the right number? It's on my agenda. Nope. What's the resolution? Let's get in here. Okay.
No, that that was a P C resolution that was used to supplement.
Okay, so.
This is, this is to approve a construction guarantee agreement and the board's decision whether to waive the the fees.
Specific to the surety.
Yeah, you're making it tricky.
Can you go over that?
I would like to make a motion to.
Has that been reviewed by our attorney and?
Yes, it has.
Where is a contingency? Where are the contingency funds in? I don't see.
The contingency funds are not listed in the construction guarantee agreement. Construction guarantee agreement comes out of our our municipal code. We have two agreements for construction, one is in the subdivision improvement agreement. This is not a subdivision improvement. This is a particular one building, essentially. Under those circumstances, we use the construction guarantee agreement. We did run this by Kent Whitmer. The language was modified slightly in the construction guarantee agreement in consideration of the waiving of fees. But yes, this has has Kent's blessing.
Our attorneys on why is that? I can't tell. It looks like Whitmer. There's there's.
Hi, can you guys hear me? Great. Yeah, so I did rework the boilerplate template for the construction guarantee surety agreement to remove the requirement for surety in this case at the request of Ed. So basically, trustees, if there were a default in this situation, if you were to approve this arrangement, then you would have to look to the hospital to enforce that agreement and and make sure that the improvements are put in instead of looking to a deposited surety amount or letter of credit and just doing it on the town's own, if that makes sense. So what you're giving up is kind of absolute certainty that it would get done. But in light of the fact that we're talking about a government entity and they're fully approved for the funding of the entire project, it's probably a pretty minimal risk.
And I'll also point out the construction guarantee agreement. When it typically calls for surety, it also has provisions in there that in the case of default, you draw on the surety to complete the construction. The town would do that. But there's provisions in there that say that if it, but if it's above that, if the construction cost to complete it is higher than the surety, you can continue to work, but then you build the the applicant here, which in this case would be Middle Park Health. And that language is still in the agreement.
I I mean, I guess I'm still a little uncomfortable. The resolution that was passed by the planning commission last June recommended that there be appropriate security or construction guarantee and then security. And the town has made a mistake before on this issue, right?
I feel like our attorneys addressed it in the construction guarantee agreement with the modifications that you made.
He took out, he took out the surety.
Yeah, right.
So that's not.
Well, okay.
That's actually doing away with.
But, okay, well, I think we still have it covered. Personally. Okay.
I'm personally all for sureties, but giving given this is a government entity and a hospital that we are very excited to get, I think it's probably safe to to say we can go without a surety on this one. Thank you, anybody else?
Sureties are kind of a button for us. So that's why we're here with them.
Right.
No, I totally appreciate that. You know, we all learn from our lessons from the past. And, you know, but I do love hearing the vote of confidence because we're here to support the community, and we're here to be here. We are a healthcare system throughout the entire county. We have five clinics and two hospitals in this county, not including our project that we're gonna have here in Frazier. So, you know, we're very committed to the people of the entirety of Grand County and Jackson County, as we support Walden as well. You know, so we appreciate, you know, the faith that you have in us, and we do look forward to being good neighbors and have a great cooperation and a symbiotic relationship, so everybody can benefit from this building going forward.
My life was definitely saved in March. And maybe, well, definitely, if the hospital would have been on the side of the county, I could have gotten to E R or faster. So I really wanted to hear.
So I would like to point out one other, one other aspect of this of this hospital that's being built. There's been a lot of communications over the past year and a half between the managers of Winter Park, myself, Granby, and Middle Park Health. Part of our broadband initiative that started with Northwest COG to extend broadband into this part of Grand County. We worked out an agreement so that the medical center would include space for what they call a meeting center. So the broadband would then come into that, and and then you could do your, what they call the last mile connectivity for broadband. And that benefits not patients, it benefits everybody, businesses, residents, and so forth as well. So there is an aspect of of community giving back that the hospital is is planning with this construction.
I don't think there's any disagreement that the hospital is a positive aspect. It's just our sensitivity to surety agreements when we've said we've never, we're never gonna do this again.
Never say never. At least I don't.
I mean, I think it's a great asset for the community. I just, I'd like, maybe it's not time or place to talk about, you know, what your commitment is to providing care for uninsured or people that are challenged with challenged financially to support citizens. The community here probably has the highest rate of paying customers, insured clients. And that's good for you guys, right? You're gonna, your revenue will be strong in this community. So it's mutually beneficial, but what is, what is a hospital's commitment to providing care to people that, you know, struggle financially, can't afford co-pays or deduct deductibles or don't have insurance?
Yes, that's a great question. So, you know, we are committed to helping the community. And so, as you're right, you know, our payer mix of insurance, you know, which is commercial insurance, Medicare, Medicaid, those kinds of things. Our payer mix is really, it's really exceptional, you know, with about forty-six percent of our payer mix being commercial insurance. Where that makes a difference is the reimbursement amount. So commercial insurance reimburses us, you know, per contract, per visit, in in a higher rate than Medicare or Medicaid. And so what we also have is we do have our charity care programs. And then we work really closely with the county and the Graham Foundation, so people are not gonna be turned away because they don't have the means. There is a process that they have to follow. There's paperwork they have to do, so it's it's an earned process. You don't just to come in and just say, we know, this is my thing, because we do have to report a lot of this out to the state. But, you know, if we, there's a lot of money every year that we put through, and we just forgive to people. And then we don't necessarily talk about it. Maybe we should talk about it more. But anybody who calls and asks for help, we can do that. And there is new legislation now too, where, you know, we don't bill for forty-five days. We don't even send out a bill for forty-five days where people have the opportunity to contact us and ask for help, and we can get them connected to the resources that they need. And then, you know, if there's something that comes up and they need a discount, you know, for cash pricing or something like that, even if they do have an insurance, you know, we're able to do that. Because what we found with the insurance exchanges and Obamacare is everybody had insurance, but no one could still afford, you know, all of the co-pays and deductibles. Because most people chose, you know, the copper plan, which had, you know, a ten, fifteen, sometimes twenty thousand dollar deductible. Where if you had to go to the E R, it goes to your deductible, you know. So it wasn't a hugely successful venture for, you know, help people with cash flow. But, yeah, we are totally involved with the community, and we have state programs. Our C E O is really, really involved with the Colorado Hospital Association, as well as other C E Os in rural areas to get programs and things together to help out our community. Because we are still considered rural where we're at. It's a big, you know, we have a lot of people here, you know, we have the tourist towns, you know, but we still have a lot of rural people here as well.
Yeah, I'd like to hear more about that in the future. I mean, you can't turn people away from the E R. That's in Tala rules, and you can't do that. But, you know, people that get caught up in the system and then, you know, generate huge bills and can't pay it. I'd like to understand how, you know, what your commitment is to our community in terms of helping people that are financially struggling.
And a lot of that's gonna be education as well. There is a stigma, you know, to, there's it, you have, it takes a little, have to be vulnerable to let people know that you need help. And sometimes, you know, that's the hardest part people have to get over coming through and then asking for the help. You know, don't wait as long as you need. Get, let's get up in front of it. You know, there's the Colorado Indigent Care Program, which is, you know, they base it upon your income, and then you have a co-pay that you pay for, you know, whether it's a E R visit, those kinds of things. So there are resources out there. I think a lot of it is education, so people know, as well as, you know, maybe trying to address, you know, some of the stigma. It's like, there's no shame in coming and asking for help, because we're here to help you. You're our friends and neighbors, which is fortunate for being a small community, because, you know, we are all friends and neighbors. We pretty much know each other here, which is a nice advantage.
Thank you, Jody.
Thank you.
Any further board comments? Okay, I think we, can you rephrase your?
I will re- rephrase when I let me see, I'll get back in here.
So Katie, there's not a resolution to.
Yeah, it's not, so I would like to make a motion to authorize the Frazier mayor to sign the construction guarantee agreement with the for the Frazier Middle Park Health Center.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Those opposed? Two names?
Thank you. We look forward to having you guys come out at the building site and see as at all the different stages. It'll be exciting for us.
I'm a, I'm a gay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So you guys don't don't have to stick it. We'd love to have you stick around, but don't feel obligated to to stick around, so. There we have baseline. So we are now at baseline planning services cost review, and this is Rob.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Hello, board and trustees. Before you is a memo outlining some of the questions and concerns that were brought up at the last meeting. And a little bit of background on the contracts to address those questions. And what was proposed is basically four distinct alternatives, because they cause different triggers along the way. The first one being, you can maintain the status quo that we've budgeted for with baseline this year and focus on transparency and cost-saving measures with them. You, we can initiate a hiring process for an internal town planner, but provide overlapping services with baseline until that planner is ready to operate. We can, with thirty days' notice, terminate a baseline engineering agreement and basically not have planning. So we'd probably pass an ordinance that would terminate planning for whatever time period until we had someone up and running. And the last one would be to just abandon planning services from the town standpoint. The last two are not real alternatives. They are within the ordinance framework. But they're, they increase liability dramatically. They're just really not good solutions for anybody. So the recommendation is to pursue one or two as far as the options. And the challenge for the board would be, option one does not have anything defined or would not trigger anything from a budget standpoint. Option two of hiring a planner, it's not in the budget. So it would require a budget amendment to allocate those funds and increase our staffing budget to fill that void. And if you would like any more clarification or guidance on any of these, I can go back and pull that stuff up. But that is, that kind of was the first simple step of which which path would y'all like to pursue?
Hey, board comments?
I'm in favor of number two.
I'm in favor of number two.
What is, I, what is the construction community thought of using baseline?
Yeah, I think you missed our last meeting.
I mean, I, I thought we.
It's very frustrating.
Well, it was a slight group of people that were negative. I thought we talked about having some face-to-face with baseline and having, maybe coming up with a corrective action plan of their, you know, deficiencies we've identified or their problems and give them an opportunity to address those before we pull the plug on the whole program.
I think option two allows that. There has been initial conversations initiated, those with baseline to really pay attention to some of the duplicative charges that were causing a lot of rancor. And so I think that will be ongoing. This is basically baseline is still our planner until we have another planner in place. I will say.
Basically saying we're gonna hire a town planner.
Yep.
That's different than what you just said.
Maybe I can add a little little clarity. You know, when we, when Catherine resigned last April, I believe it was, we had to have a planner in place, and I reached out to baseline. We brought the contract to the board. We approved that. My my discussion with the board at the time was, let's give them six months and see how this looks. In the six months that we've had there, I admit there's been issues, a lot of issues. Most recently, I got a call this past Friday from baseline because they failed to issue the press release for the special meeting that. that we had been working on for a month and a half for February the eighth. And I don't normally get mad, but I got mad at that one. And for me, that was kind of the culmination of a lot of errors that, that we've seen. And we've had a lot of conversations with, with Ben and I have had conversations about how to reduce costs. We have received, uh, some concessions to, to reduce those administrative costs. We've reduced the amount of people that are showing up at, at board meetings because they're you know, each one of those are getting an hourly fee. There's a lot of issues in our code that gives the town manager some flexibilities and then it gives town staff some flexibilities there. We lost a lot of continuity with, with Catherine, uh, being gone. So some of that continuity and some of those, uh, those approvals and so forth. My personal view has been that, you know, our code needs to be real clear about, about what is required and what's not required. And a lot of the issues that have come up have been just disagreements between developers and, and the town. Uh, for example, people wanting to bypass certain steps of the system. We go back and forth, you know, and it's, and it's becomes a long debate and then baseline or Merrick may get involved and costs go up. And I've always encouraged staff and baseline to follow the code. But quite frankly, this is, this is a, to me, it's, it's a minute priority of what is, what is what is that value that the town wants to uphold in our, in our land development, uh, procedures? You know, we had a town planner for a long time. Uh, baseline was a good intermediate step to get us through a rough period. But if the town is, says we, you know, having an internal planner is, is what we feel is, is most valuable for us as a community, is most valuable to our our businesses, our development community and the local public. I need to hear that and we'll, we're already drafting, uh, a job notice for a town planner if that's the way the board wants to go on this. But either way, I think option two would be my recommendation. Understanding that there will be a probably three to four month lag between starting that action and getting somebody hired, if we can even find somebody. And then on top of that, there's probably a good eight to sixteen months of, of transition and overlap, just from our experience with with a new planner coming in midstream and taking on new projects. That did cause a lot of confusion, uh, early on, but, uh, you know, it's whatever the board would like to do.
So do you see our new project manager being able to assist a new planner when they, when we get them and backing up on some of the details or are they going to be just on the ground? Specific projects?
What are project managers doing, Monica? Is ironing out some of those procedures, not just with, uh, with capital projects, but also with the development project as well. Uh, making sure that the coordination and timelines are being met. But we also have a lot of unknowns. I mean, we get emails back and forth all day long simply between us and the, and the building department in Winter Park. Back and forth emails about, about things like building permits and, you know, Monica's done a great job of helping to standardize that. She's also compiled a list, two or three pages of, of recommended code uh, changes that we need to do that help us to streamline this procedure easier and to standardize those procedures. It has not been easy, uh, because the building department in Winter Park sometimes can be a little difficult to work with. But we're making progress. We have a meeting on February the fifteenth. Monica will be in town. We're going to sit down with the Winter Park staff, town staff to kind of address some of these lingering hiccups in the procedures. Or I think we're learning from our mistakes with, uh, with baseline. I think baseline is learning from their mistakes as well. But, um, you know, missing this deadline, I mean, I, we coordinated for a month and a half to make sure we could have a call for a special meeting. This was on the books. Uh, the applicant himself also put out monies and it's costing him about five thousand dollars a month. Just in, in those holding costs to get this project off the ground. Um, you know, notices were mailed out. And unfortunately, baseline dropped the ball. No, and that's, that's unfortunate. It's egg on our face as well. So, um, I'm ready to make a change myself.
One, one option that's not on here is, um, kind of interesting, the other night, that's a theme that came out from the town manager applicants was around working with local governments and, you know, sort of collaborating and stuff. Is there any possibility just to afford some relationship with Winter Park? And, you know, give them money to help maybe hire somebody else or do they have capacity? I mean, that's another option. The money they may be better spent.
One of, one of the bullets, I reached out to James Shockey in the town of Winter Park. They confirmed they do not have capacity and they do not want to adopt any of our planning services.
Yeah, they're the home rule and we're statutory. It's different. So
It's, it's
This is trustee cleanse. As far as the study of regarding baseline, I think now is the time to work out a deal with Winter Park planning and zoning to bring a new planner and have monthly meetings of planning commission and town board. To make sure we are on the same page as to how we want to plan out and develop the town and property around the town. Baseline is overcharging for their services and after their rate, affordable housing is not attainable. If they charge twice as much, they should be able to do four times the work of any onsite planner. Value is in the results, not the cost. It is absolutely unacceptable to town. And baseline failed to get the paper, the paperwork, workout for the development on Muse. This is proof that baseline does not care about town or the people living or developing at the town in Frazier.
Or no quit.
Or no quit, trustee quit. Um, I was, um, I think it's integral in a community like this that we have a, I was not I was never in favor of a consultant for the, the planning. I mean, you, you need to have somebody that lives in your community for planning. Uh, they need to be able to see what's happening here. Um, we have a lot of development happening. We need people that are, somebody that's here and can see what's happening. Having them come up once a month or once every two months into our community is not an ideal situation for our community. Can we, so I'm, I'm in favor of number two.
I agree.
Can we still use baseline as a consultant when we need? I mean, I
We're not firing.
That's
Well, no, but once we have somebody in place, I guess my concern, my understanding was baseline pointed out several things that were problematic with our, in our code. And helped us correct those, my understanding.
Not yet.
But I pointed out some things that were, you know, either inconsistencies or needed to be updated or whatever. I ju, I just kind of like the idea of someone that has a broader scope and works with many municipalities in Colorado and understand where the pitfalls are versus just having someone on site that had, may not have the, the scope of, um, experience.
Well, the new planner may put fresh eyes on it too.
Can I, can I speak to Louis's comment there briefly? Uh, before Catherine left, we did talk and explore bringing in what they call a planner two position. Someone to offset and help with some of that planning process. It is a heavy lift for one person. Sometimes our development can be a little contentious and, uh, you know, to keep people uh, up to speed, upbeat and positive, uh, having a little assistance, uh, is certainly welcome. Nationwide, there's a shortage on planners as, as they're moving into the private sector. So hiring a planner would be a struggle. But one of the options that you talked about is, is we could have a contractual relationship to handle a certain percentage of the, of the planning process. And those costs would be probably significantly reduced. Our code does allow for pass-through, uh, costs for our consultants and so forth like that. So you have that option and you're going to have, you, you're going to have baseline on board until it's ready to do a full handoff of the projects.
So if you change number two to say something, I mean, you, you basically the way I read this, once we have an internal town planner that's going to operate without support, then they're on their own. Is there, you know, a way we can build a, a process to have a, that consulting services available? Are you talking about having a assistant town planner? Cause that adds more cost.
It does. And what we're asking, this isn't not a recommendation, make a motion to do this. What we're looking for from the board is their direction. If they want to have an internal planner, we'll start the process. What happens to baseline down the future is really going to be subject to having a planner on board, understanding the scope of that work, giving them up to speed and then making a determination. You know, nine months or so after the new planner's on board. We have something called a, a PDD, which, which is kind of unusual in Colorado. It's, it's outside of the norm. So understanding the complexities of, of that particular aspect of planning as it applies in Frazier can be difficult. But we're not asking for a mod, a motion to go with option number two. I'm just asking if this, this town's priorities to in-house planning, all I need is, is thumbs up from you and we'll work on doing that.
And I would imagine if baseline really stepped up to the plate and got wonderful while we're looking for a, a planner, we could just stay with them.
That's true as well.
And that, that's why I always thought we were doing sort of a corrective action. Here, here are the problems, here are deficiencies. Give them an opportunity to correct those if they can. Then by all means, we need to hire somebody.
Yeah, I think option two really is about the idea of saying, start that. I think hiring a planner is going to be very challenging. Because we saw that earlier. Um, and I think that that is a start that process. But we're still continuing to work with baseline and trying to optimize with, uh, that relationship. Winter Park has a hybrid model. Um, and I don't want to build a hybrid model from the start. Uh, if we're going to really commit to a planner in-house, I want to make sure that they are able to understand the code and really have the time and bandwidth to dive into that and make sure that they understand all the pieces. While they're essentially sitting in while baseline's doing stuff so they can see, see it in action. And then you can say, okay, at this point, where's our skill set? Where are gaps? Do we need to make sure that we have a contract to fill certain voids or a certain volume or whatever? And then we can move forward.
A hybrid model, what, what exactly?
They have internal planners, but they also in, uh, on certain projects, if they're big enough scope, they can contract out.
Okay, that's fine.
So we as Stash to our town still have the ability to change our building code, right? Oh yeah. So what's the, why could Winter Park and Frazier's building departments not be combined?
They, well, again, like Rob explained, they don't have the capacity.
That's one thing, but like
And they don't want to.
That, and that's, that's another thing, but, but it is, if they wanted to, it would be possible.
Certainly.
Okay.
Sure. Since there's a government agreement to expand, uh, our, our building services to include planning services.
Yeah, I mean, we've done it with police department, public works, like transit.
Yeah, yeah.
It seems to make a lot of sense.
Budget we have allocated for a town planner and go to Winter Park and say, this is what we're willing to, you know, pitch in.
Okay, Louis and Brian, go twist their arm and make them take this.
And, and you would need to
That's what you guys are saying.
Yeah.
You know, but if they're, if they're already overwhelmed
Right.
And can't meet the demand, then we're not going to be providing a good service to the people that need the planner's advice and services.
It's kind of like
Because it's
Yeah.
Starting all over.
It's like the same situation, uh, about a year and a half ago. Uh, we were looking to establish, uh, who might can help with engineering services. And I reached out to JVA because they're they have an office locally. Uh, they just simply didn't have the capacity to take on additional work, even though they're doing, they're the town engineer for, for Winter Park. You know, Winter Park has, you know, for whatever their reasons, their budget and so forth, uh, they have a model that seems to be working. Baseline can work, you know, and if we do hire an internal planner, I would recommend. Of course, I'm not going to be here to make that recommendation, but, uh, I would foresee if I was going to be here not to do a transfer midstream with an ongoing development, is let that person step in with new developments. Everything that's on our plate right now, with a couple of exceptions, was transferred. Even the muse drive was transferred, uh, based on initial conversations and discussions with
It's transferred to what?
From Catherine Trotter to baseline.
Gotcha.
They had to pick things up. They had to research, okay, what communications? How do we, they had to learn the code. They had to figure out, okay, what was communicated, what was said. A lot of things were said in kind of just one-on-one conversations, which is typical in, in the early stages of the planning process. But it leads people to different expectations when we, when we made that switch. So, uh, I will say that the projects that baseline are picking up from scratch right now are running smoothly. Uh, they are tracking their time. Monica is on board as well as is helping with some of the coordination of that. But Monica does not have the capacity and, and we're not going to ask her. She's done the training to be a planner. She's a program management is, is her specialty.
I, I'm, I'm hearing a general consensus that we need to be working for.
Yeah. Number two. And, um, Andy Miller called and left me messages this morning. He's the chair of the planning commission. And he encouraged us to move towards having a planner on site.
Okay.
He thought it was really
Yep, I do. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Next is support for US forty, safety and mobility improvements. This is, uh, I'm, I'm not real comfortable with the way
It's written?
The way I wrote this, which I, which I didn't write this. So, um, I, I would like to tape, this isn't a high priority. And we were good this. I'd like to table this because I'm not comfortable.
You want to redraft it a little bit?
I will point out that this is based on, uh, the Northwest TPR. Uh, we have had an improved, uh, list
R, which is
Transportation Planning Region.
Thank you.
Uh, they are the ones that has helped, uh, develop a master plan for Grand County and the rest of the, the region uh, for construction projects prioritizing that. And they've done a really good job of doing that. And under the, this current construction season and the grant application process. We had projects on the books, including the widening of US forty between Kremlin and Steamboat Springs. Uh, I believe there was also some other issues at Red Dirt Hill that was on a priority. Uh, the TPR made application for a grant. It got denied. Uh, CDOT also stepped in and changed some of the priorities, repurposed some of that. What this letter is, and there's a timeline. Unfortunately, there's years of time. And this is a form letter that was prepared by the TPR that went to all municipalities asking for a lot of support. The only added part that I put in there was the one, two, the third paragraph to gap just a little personal player to this. Uh, but they want these responses back so that they can gather them together when they reapply.
When do they need them back? Why? Because I'm not going to sign this, that, that's written.
Okay.
What's the problem that you have with it?
Well, they don't even include the turnouts go as far as Kremlin.
Right. So the pieces that are in, the pieces that we're looking for funding that got denied are the, are the pieces that they talked about here. So yeah, our stretch of forty is not getting much except for Red Dirt Hill.
And how do you describe Red Dirt Hill from where to where? Because some of the left-hand turns closer to Tabernash I feel are more dangerous than Red Dirt Hill. Yeah, the Highlands, especially the last one this way where that man was killed.
Just like, uh, about words?
Yeah, I mean, the Red Dirt Hill piece was from, from Andy. So that predates my time on, on the Northwest TPR. But they kept it in. So that was good of them. I mean, it's, it's the stretch that Andy wanted the most help with. And so, yeah, where, I mean, to add anything about our stretch of forty at this point is, is pointless. Um, because this is what we, what the Northwest TPR requested and got denied. So if we can help get this through, then we can focus on our side of forty, our piece of forty after that.
I also like to point out that Brian Surtvenik has now been elected as the co-chair of the TPR. So we have better representation, uh, here on this side of the valley.
So maybe we'll get, maybe they'll know.
Yeah, who we are.
Who we are.
The mayor doesn't want to sign it? Should we, can we make it from the Frazier Town Board?
If you're not comfortable signing, not going to sign it. You know, we
I doubt Mayor Pete ever, but our secretary he even reads it, but I mean, it's, it's not very well written and I, I think we need to talk about our own issues on there.
Yeah, I mean, our, our
Yeah, I mean, our, our stretch is not on the table right now. I'm going to do my best to get it on the table, but, but. But it's going to help us in the Northwest TPR if we help them get this passed.
So that left turn. Into the Highlands. Closest to Tabernash. Where that young man was killed. I've almost been caught there. By someone making a left turn if I'm coming south. And the sun is shining and everyone's headlight or taillights look like brake lights. You come up pretty fast on someone who's make, standing there. And there's no way, no place to go.
So. This letter, if you say at this stage, Brian, it's kind of boilerplate for reapplying for what they were denied.
That's exactly right.
And Phil, do you have a problem just with how it's written and it's poorly written, but not the content?
Well, the content as well.
Okay.
And we need to be. I understand what they're, your guys are, the TPR is trying to do.
You know what? Propose that, uh, Mayor and Brian sit down and look through it and see if there's a. Something that they work out together that's appropriate and then we authorize you to sign it.
Yeah, if you don't like the way it's written, why don't you write it? You know?
But.
This is informational, right? We don't need to take any action on this.
It's, it's, it's not, it's not. And, and then you're correct. It, it could be rewritten. They provided a form letter. They said you could change it if you want, so.
Let's change it.
No, we'll take care of it.
I don't know. I will find that out. I'll send it to an email copy. So we are at updates now. Any updates from anybody?
I went to the cast meeting last week in Steamboat. That was my first one. It's the Colorado Association of Ski Towns. Interesting experience. Um. It was a one day session essentially, um, but the best part was just getting to know other people from other ski towns and realizing we all have the same problems and. You know, instead of reinventing the wheel, we can talk to each other. So just opening those doors were really nice. Um, yeah, the content of the one day session. Was. Mediocre, but, um, but meeting everybody made it worth it. So.
Anybody else?
I did send out an email today. The Northwest Council of Governments did hire the Grant Navigator. Uh, we're happy to have that position on board. That person will be able to assist, uh. You know, towns within the TPR, within Northwest COG, uh, uh, region, uh, to navigate the. The hundreds of grant opportunities is going to be pouring out over the next several years. So thank you so much, John, for that hire. I don't know if you wanted to make an update about that at all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other updates? Hey, Louis, do you want to make a motion?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion that we enter in the two executive sessions. Conference with the town attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice for on specific legal questions under. CRS section twenty-four, six, four oh two, four B. And for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters. That may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy. Or negotiations and or instructing negotiators under CRS section twenty-four, six, four oh two. Or E. Regarding litigation to include town attorney. Kent Whitmer, special counsel, John Chameau. Town manager Ed Cannon and assistant town manager Michael Brock. And then number two, the second executive session. For the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations. Developing strategy for negotiations and or instructing negotiators under CRS section twenty-four, six, four oh two, four E. Town manager recruitment. To include John and. Of Northwest Cod.
A second. Both motions.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Okay, just for the public, um, we will not be coming back because, um, there's no action to take after this. So we will, uh, we'll be ending the meeting and, um. Moving on. So, and our first executive session because, um. Ken, you want to do this?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. So it's my opinion that, uh, the matters that will be discussed in the first executive session are privileged. And confidential and therefore the meeting does not need to be recorded.
We will be recording the second. So thanks, everybody in the public for joining us. We really appreciate you showing up.
Michael, do you have, uh, John Camille's email address? Send him a link for this Zoom meeting. It, it'd be better if he's zooming in instead of just calling in on my phone.
I think, I think you can hear it.
Okay, my office is open.
You can hear everything.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah. Yeah.